Place and made it deliver it.
Yeah, I can see that. I know.
Too much.
Yeah. I'm like, thanks so much for your.
Yeah, this is a bad. She's like sending me files.
You're the best. Thank you so much.
Originally, I probably didn't have to do it. I started doing it over and then I was like.
Here you go.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I knew who. I didn't need that.
Oh, okay. I see her.
Yeah, yeah.
Hair looks good.
That's the truth.
Hi Fred. All right, thank you. Let's see, we got a new clock. Hey, Michael.
I, I think that's fine. It's working.
Can you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and good evening. Tonight is Tuesday, June 11th. I apologize for the late start. We came from executive session where we were discussing police negotiations. Uh, the first item on the agenda is a, oh, and uh, we're not uh, joined tonight by uh, trustee Heiser, who is excused um, for personal reasons. Um, the first item on the agenda tonight is a report uh, from Sustainable Westchester, a presentation on the proposed Westchester Power Program Agreement. Please.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor Trustees and Village Administrators, uh, village administrator singular. Uh, it is a pleasure to be with you and I, I appreciate your permitting me to spend a couple of minutes speaking to you about the Westchester Power Program. As some of you know, I spent 28 years receiving presentations like this. So it's a little surreal for me now to be on this side of the dais. Uh, but one thing I learned is to be respectful of the guidance and requests that come from my hosts. Uh, and we did hear that we should skip over a general discussion of the climate crisis, skip over a general introduction of Sustainable Westchester, and get right to the program, which is what we will do. But certainly if you want to talk about any of those subjects during Q and A, I'm happy for the conversation to go wherever you want to take it.
Thank you. We, we do appreciate that because I think every, almost every member of this board has been here through, um, and every member of this board has been here through the different uh, presentations that we've been given regarding the Westchester Power Program.
It's a group of veterans. Uh, so I, even, uh, even what I did leave in the presentation, I'll, I'll skip through rather quickly and uh, in the interest of uh, of getting to what's most important to your decision. So just a refresher on the basics of how it works. Municipalities gather together, join together, aggregate their electricity demand in order to maximize their bargaining power and get a good deal for their residents. Sustainable Westchester functions as your agent and administrator, structuring a bidding process among electric suppliers. We then purchase renewable um, energy certificates on the state market. That's the instrument through which renewable power is uh, accounted for and distributed within the state. Once contract terms are set, notification goes out to all participants in the program, advising them of the rates and advising them of their options. And finally, before the, the contract commences or anytime thereafter, residents and small businesses can opt out of the program if they don't want to be part of it. So those are sort of the mechanics, but what are the goals? Why do we do this? Threefold, providing clean energy, expanding consumer choices, and capping electricity costs. So just sort of taking those one by one. It's in the area of clean energy that the program has really been an extraordinary success. In 2023 alone, you can see it mitigated more than 310,000 metric tons of carbon dioxide. I know a number like that can be a little bit of an abstraction, so just to put it in relatable terms, you could think about cars being taken off the road. That's the equivalent of more than 73,000 cars coming off the road. You can think of it as planting new trees. It's more than five million trees, as well as those trees growing for 10 years. There's an effort now to estimate the social cost of carbon. That's future infrastructure needs, future emergency response needs, future public health impacts. According to DEC calculations, it's the equivalent of saving more than $40 million each year. And maybe the best metric of all for municipal leaders, think about the good work that you're doing here in Ry Brook and that others are doing. I'm sure you've swapped out your LED lights. Uh, you're probably trying to green your fleet with EVs. You may have done weatherization work on your public buildings. This single program is doing more to reduce regional greenhouse gas emissions than all of those other actions combined. So really deep impact and you should take pride in the fact that you've been a part of something that has done such good for Westchester County. So the second goal is expanding consumer choice. And to understand this, it's necessary to think about what the energy market looks like from a consumer perspective. So without a program like this, the traditional model, consumers really have two choices. One is the utility, Con Edison. That's fossil fuel based energy with a variable monthly rate. If you don't want that, you can enter into a contract with an energy service company, an ESCO, which works for some people, but other few people find that difficult to navigate and there's sometimes predatory practices, difficult to leave a contract without penalties or fees. With this program, CCA, you still have those same two options. You can go with the utility if you want it. You can contract with a private ESCO if you want it. But now you have a third option, which is Westchester Power. It's green energy uh, with a fixed rate, no penalties for coming and going as often as you like. And something that's notable, because people talk about it a lot, is that in both scenarios, there is a default electric supply that you have to opt out of if you don't want it. So we think in total, this is a model that provides more choices and more competition for consumers. And finally, capping electricity costs, this is really just another way to think about a fixed rate. Uh, we know that during the duration of the program and the two utility areas we serve, rates have varied from four to 22 cents a month. That's a big delta. Uh, when you have a fixed rate, you know that your rate can never exceed the contract amount. Um, and that's a way of shielding consumers against price spikes. And to the extent that some people like predictability in their budgeting, having that fixed rate can also be an asset. Uh, so a couple of additional benefits that are relevant to municipal leaders. Participation in this program gives you enhanced access to state grants through NYSERTA's CEC program. Uh, and I'll say parenthetically, this is Ry Brook's score right now. You should talk to us offline because it looks to me like you're not getting credit for things you've already done. Uh, so for example, your participation in CCA would, should give you 1,500 points. Um, and it's really just a matter of sort of filling out some simple paperwork. So we can assist you in that process if you want. And the reason it's relevant is those points uh, entitle you to significant state grants, which you can use for a variety of purposes. So you don't want to leave money on the table.
Yeah, we're all looking at Chris.
No, we've been talking about it through WMOA, yeah.
So we're, we're here to help. That's part of our role as Sustainable Westchester. So let us assist you. Uh, really robust consumer support and education is part of this program. Assistance to muni staffs, links to other programs that provide guaranteed savings uh, on utility bills, which can be really valuable to residents. Uh, and so, you know, there's a lot to recommend this program. And let me talk about opting out because I know, again, it's a central feature. Consumers can always opt out anytime. It's easy to do so. You can do by mail, by email, uh, online. You can call us and we'll assist you through the process. There's never a fee or penalty for doing so. And once you've opted out once, you're done. You're never re-enrolled in the program unless you choose to come back into the program. Sometimes people ask why this is done on an opt-out basis? Why not just have it as an opt-in program? So there are really two reasons. One is the basic viability of a program like this. We cannot go out into the energy markets and entertain bids unless we can represent a certain quantity of demand. So the whole model collapses if it's not done on an opt-out basis. There's no opt-in version of this program. And the second reason is impact. If, if we're going to get anywhere close to the state's goals for the clean energy transition, it's not going to be by signing people up for clean energy 10 or 20 at a time. It's going to be by encouraging the uptake of renewable energy in the thousands and the tens of thousands. And you can only do that through a program structured in this way. And finally, just to emphasize this point again, there is always a default energy supplier. And so the question for you is not whether there's going to be some opt-out. The question for you is what should that opt-out be? Uh, and so you put it all together and we feel like everyone is really empowered. Residents and businesses can choose their energy supply from a broader menu of options than they would otherwise have. They can balance price and predictability and environmental action in whatever ratios make sense to them. For a municipality, the choice is a little bit different. You can demonstrate intentionality in your energy choices. You can decide what community-wide values and priorities you want to emphasize and encourage. And if that includes leadership on energy choice, clean renewable power, consumer protection, then Westchester Power can be a very attractive option for you. So let's talk about the elephant in the room. The current contract, from a price perspective, not great. Um, the, the rate is a little over 15 cents per kilowatt hour. By contrast, for the last 12 months, Con Ed has averaged a little under 10 cents an hour. Uh, you're not happy about that? We're not happy about that either. Uh, but it is important to recognize that there is a reason why the contract ended up in this place. Uh, it was concluded in 2022, just as the war in Ukraine was breaking out. Energy prices were high. All the mainstream forecasts said energy prices would continue to increase. In fact, contrary to those forecasts, forecasts, energy prices subsequently declined. And so we ended up with a fixed rate that was persistently higher than the utility rate. Uh, so I, I do think it's important to recognize that, um, that really was an outlier. If you look at the broader history of the program dating back to 2016, you will see that more typically, our prices have been quite close to those of the utility. Some years a little bit higher, some years a little bit lower. Uh, another important point of context is to think about the renewable energy product we are offering relative to the renewable energy that's available from a private ESCO. That's really the apples-to-apples comparison. And what you will see if you do that analysis is that even in this lousy current contract, uh, our renewable energy has come in typically at the low end of what is available on private market. And so for anyone who actually wants renewable energy, Westchester Power has been quite a good deal. Uh, another point to keep in mind is that one's electric bill has two big components, delivery and supply. We're talking here only about supply. Delivery in every iteration remains the responsibility of the utility. They own the infrastructure, they own the lines. So the variability occurs only in the minority of the bill that, uh, that is associated with electric supply. And just to have a kind of a, a focus on Ry Brook to look at financial impacts, uh, we tried to sort of smooth this out for the lifetime of the program to provide an average. You know, there are lots of variations in, in individual households, but this is a good sort of baseline. So the, the typical monthly expense for energy supply through Westchester Power in Ry Brook has been $69. Over the same length of time, for Con Ed, it's been $64. If you factor in the cost of carbon, which I mentioned earlier, then the utility has been much more expensive, $103. Uh, and so one way to look at this is that for about a nickel a day, uh, the residents of Ry Brook have had clean renewable energy, 100%, which is a, a pretty good deal. And I know there will have been questions about the administrative fees. So just to put that in context, uh, it amounts to about a dollar 42 a month. Uh, that is a tiny fraction of the electric bill. Uh, there has been an increase proposed in this contract. It'll be the first one in the nine-year history of the program. So inflation alone is a significant factor for that. We also really want to enhance our education and outreach, which we would want to do in concert with communities like Ry Brook. There'll be some cost associated with that. And we are a lean administrator. We've typically been among the, the most cost-effective CCA administrators in the state. The typical rate is a little higher than ours. We're proposing for it to be. We're proposing for it to be 0.175 cents. It's usually 0.2 cents for other administrators. So new contract opportunities as we head into 2024. Let me eliminate that while you can see the background items. We can ignore that. The good news is, we expect the next contract to be significantly better. The indicatives that we have today, and to be clear, it's not a guarantee until we actually entertain the bids, but the indicatives we have today suggest that we'll be able to come in with a significantly lower rate. That is an incentive to move quickly before prices change in the summer months. There's also a reason to believe that a fixed rate will be advantageous in this next cycle. And the reason for that has to do with capacity constraints in the energy market that are expected in 2025. Some of the most polluting peaker plants are expected to come offline. That's good news. But some of the renewable energy that will have to replace them will not yet be online. And that disequilibrium is likely to apply upward pressure on utility rates. So a fixed rate set in 2024 will probably hold up well in 2025, although that too is not a guarantee. We always want to emphasize it. So on this point, and forgive me, I have to get a little bit into the weeds, because as much as we try to simplify things, it's an inherently complicated subject, and it is directly relevant to the choice you have to make in Ry Brook. And it has to do with the manner in which renewable energy certificates are obtained. So RECs, renewable energy certificates, come in sort of two flavors. One is Tier Two, and you can think of this as the maintenance of legacy generators. It's primarily hydropower, older clean energy facilities, which do need to maybe do need to be maintained. They're an important part of the overall energy mix. And that is how we have traditionally supported the renewable energy in this program, through Tier Two RECs. Tier One RECs, by contrast, are associated with newer energy production. They are typically wind and solar. And in the sense that they provide an additive stimulus to the renewable energy market, you can think of them as having a deeper environmental impact, a kind of deeper shade of green. So what's changed in the market is that Tier Two RECs are now in more limited supply than previously, whereas Tier One RECs are available for purchase for a program like Westchester Power for the first time. Okay, you with me so far? Yeah, okay. So what does that mean in terms of the offerings? So in the current contract and in prior contracts, we've had two default options that municipalities could select for their residents. One was what we called the standard option. That was sort of a fossil fuel mix, which we haven't even talked about now, but at a fixed rate. And the other, which we'll call medium green, was 100% renewable, obtained through Tier Two RECs. We're not going to be able to offer that standard any longer. It's not permissible under state regulations any longer. Frankly, it was never consistent with the program goals anyway, and only two of the 29 municipalities chose it, so very limited demand. But there's also a problem with the Tier Two, medium, medium green, and that has to do with what I said earlier, that the Tier Two RECs are going to be in more limited supply. So it seems unlikely that we'll be able to offer that as a default option, although it may be available as an opt-up for individuals, and I'll explain more about that in a moment. What are we offering instead? First, what you might think of as light green, kind of our basic offering. So this will be 50% Tier Two RECs, better than the utility in terms of its renewability. On the other hand, less than what is available right now, but it will also be less expensive. And so there's a balancing act to be struck. And we want to offer what we're calling dark green, and this is how we're going to get back up to 100% renewability. And this would be through a blend of Tier One and Tier Two RECs. And what's notable is that this would be the greenest product we've offered in the history of the program because of the inclusion of the Tier One RECs. And just to give you a sense of price indicatives, again, not a guarantee, but the current rate is about 15.4 cents. The comparable apples-to-apples comparison, the the medium green, we think would come in at about 12 and a half cents. That's a 20% decrease. Dark green, a little bit more expensive. Light green, a little less expensive. In each case, though, each of those products, we think will be significantly more favorable than what we've seen in the last two years, and that is that is good news. So take that all, all that information, and kind of drill it down to the options for you as the as the Board of Trustees. Option one is to exit the program. Say you're done with Westchester Power. You don't want to be associated with it any longer. In that instance, the municipal power supplier in Ry Brook would go back to being Con Ed. Fossil fuel, variable rate, no additional options for consumers aside from private ESCOs. Option two is to say, we want to stay in the program, and we want to establish as our municipal default that light green, the 50% Tier Two RECs. If you do that, then individuals can choose to opt up to 100% or opt out of the program entirely and go back to Con Edison. Finally, option three is to stay in the program and indicate that you want to go, if possible, to 100% renewability. And in that scenario, individuals can opt down to 50% if they want to still do something good for the environment but save a little money, or once again, opt out of the program entirely. Now, a little bit of a wrinkle here, again, sorry about the complexity, but want to lay it all out for you, is that the 100% model would be dependent on availability and price. And if you elect to go that option three and say, we want to go 100% renewable, what we say to you is, you don't have to firmly commit to that until the price is known. And we expect that will happen towards the end of July. And if upon seeing that, you say, nope, no good, too much for us, then you can go back to the 50% renewable option. So you need to commit sooner rather than later, as soon as practical, to being part of the program at all, because we need to know that you're there in order to entertain bids. And at that point, you're committing yourself at a minimum to the 50%. If you signal again that your desire is 100%, then you'll have that secondary decision down the road after all the information is laid out for you and the bidding is complete. This is the timetable I just mentioned. We ask, if possible, that you move as quickly as practical. I know municipal board likes to be rushed. I do like to be rushed. But we do have a sort of a critical path that we have to make our way through, and and we hope that we can assist you in in reaching the decision as quickly as as practical. I think in the interest of time, I will skip over the the rousing conclusion in which I speak about your ability to demonstrate agency and impact on on our on our environmental future. But I do thank you very, very much for the opportunity to address you. And of course, I'd be very pleased to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you for the presentation. No, we we do appreciate it. And I mean, just one thing that caught my eye, I just noticed that Croton Gorge Park is on that, and it's on the picture on the the second to last slide.
Indeed.
So so the idea being, and I guess, you know, just just to be clear, the idea being that any municipality that decides to continue with the program will still have, until the bid openings, to decide which option to go with?
Correct.
Between two and three.
Yeah.
Right, well, one is not in the program, so.
So you have to decide, if you want to stay in the program, you need to decide that by our second meeting in June, which for us would be June 25, I believe. So that's enough time, I'm assuming?
I mean, the earlier the better. If you were able to signal to us informally that you think it's probable that you'll stay in, that would be helpful to us. And then, of course, if that's the earliest you can act, then, you know, that's great.
So June 20, by June 25, our second meeting, the board would have to decide, yes, we want to continue with either 50% or 100% renewable, renewable, or no, you decide not to not to continue. And then after the bids are opened in late July, then the board can decide whether you want to, depending on what the rates are, because they'll be known at that time, whether you want to go with the 50% or the 100% renewable.
That's exactly right. And let me also note, Chris, that we've had to modify the documentation that we already sent over to you slightly to correspond with what I just described, because this actually reflects changes in the REC market just in the last 24 hours. So I will tomorrow make sure we send to you the updated documentation. There won't be any surprises or complexities in there, but we just want to make sure the language corresponds to what you're what you're hearing.
And I know with, you know, the last time we had gone through the contract process, the original bids, there was there was a set amount that Westchester Power wasn't going to accept over, and then none of the bids came in below it, so we had to go back to rebid. Are you again setting that price of saying, if it's not, if if it's not below this number, we're we don't see ourselves moving forward with this?
So it's a good question, and we wrestled with that. And we decided in the end not to include that cap. And the reason is, perversely, last time, it actually ended up jacking up the price because the the number came in just above the contract limitation in a rising market, and we started chasing it, and we had to go higher than we would have otherwise. And so our conclusion was, maximum flexibility gives us the flexibility to negotiate the best possible deal for you. So that will apply to that basic buy-in at the 50% level. But as we were saying earlier, in terms of the higher-priced products, the 100% renewable, you will have complete information about what the rate is before you have to commit to it. And again, I am highly confident that the rate we'll be able to deliver is significantly lower than what what it is today. How much lower will be determined on exactly the date of the bid. But to the extent that you're worried of kind of overshooting where we've been, that's not a realistic prospect, given the current condition of the energy market.
No, is there any, why do you think the ESCOs are still at a higher rate? You were showing the comparison and why they're still hovering at that 14, 15. What are the reasons that the ESCOs are still high?
That's a good question. I'm not 100% sure, but, you know, they are for-profit entities, and they're typically dealing with single purchasers. And it's a good example of how the bundled aggregated demand that we are presenting to the marketplace gives us the leverage to negotiate a better deal than an individual might might be able to negotiate. So I think that's the explanation. There should be variations from ESCO to ESCO, of course.
If you could, if you could go back to a slide, slide number 27, I believe it is.
So I don't have the numbers displayed on my screen.
I got you. The the cost, this shows the supply and delivery costs.
Sure.
Because I know this was something, this was, this was something that trustee Heiser, who's not, you know, not able to be at this meeting, had had pointed out. If you could explain this a little bit more, I think just for everyone listening at home or.
Sure. So your monthly utility bill has multiple components. For that matter, we haven't even talked about gas, and a lot of people, gas may be even the higher expense than than electricity. But when it comes to electric, the two biggest components of the bill are delivery and supply. So you can think of delivery, obviously, as the act of transmitting the energy through all the infrastructure that exists throughout our communities. That is always the responsibility of the utility, which owns that infrastructure and which sets the delivery rates, usually under regulation by the state. Separate and apart from that is energy supply. So the juice that flows through the lines can come from multiple different potential suppliers, and that's where consumers have a choice. And so we, through Westchester Power, become one of those suppliers, along with the ESCOs and and the utility. And as you can see, for most people, supply is actually the smaller portion of the bill. We don't give a uniform ratio because there's a lot of variation from bill to bill, but usually it's it's less than the majority. And so to the extent that you're thinking about, you know, to what degree does Westchester Power impact my price pro or con relative to my total utility bill, keep in mind that we're only impacting the supply portion. Much in the same way that you can think of your property tax bill as divided between a municipal component and a school component and a county component, we're only dealing with one segment of it.
Right. And and I think that was, and then if you could just go to the next slide, please, on your presentation, I think, this shows the impact to Ry Brook residents, forgetting the third. I mean, it's, you know, yes, the we want to save on the carbon costs for society overall. We want to do what we can, but I think the direct costs for an average home in Ry Brook is kind of shown between the white and the brown, correct?
Correct. Averaged over the length of Ry Brook's participation in the program.
Okay.
And we put it in monthly terms because that's how most people experience their utility bill. So we thought that was the most relatable metric. But obviously, you can multiply it or divide it by any unit of time you want.
Right.
You mentioned that the administration fee is going to be increasing. Can you elaborate on this for us, please?
Sure. So the prior administration fee was 0.1 cents per kilowatt hour. The new administrative fee will be 0.175 cents per kilowatt hour. As I indicated earlier, a big chunk of that is just inflation in the nine years that the program has been operating. Not not many things have held steady over those nine years, and meanwhile, our expenses continue to rise. It is quite administratively burdensome to run a program like this. We've got 145,000 accounts throughout the county.
That was my next question.
There you go. Yeah. Significant regulatory compliance issues, legal issues that have to be worked through, customer service operations that have to be maintained. So all of that is part of Westchester Power. And one thing that we've heard consistently from municipalities is that although the ability to opt out is there and robust, many people are not aware of it, and and therefore there's a concern that some people may be sort of inadvertently trapped in a program, which maybe they don't want. And so we would like to sort of take that commentary to heart and step up our public information and engagement. And, you know, there is some cost associated with doing that as well. But I do want to put that figure in the right perspective. It is a minuscule fragment of this entire thing. It's literally, as I said, $1.42 per month for the typical household in Ry Brook. The increase is, you know, about 50 cents per month. So we're not talking about a significant amount of money from from an individual consumer perspective, and I think it can be used to good effect.
And during this last policy period, I guess, how many clients opted out? Was it a significant number?
A simple and logical question without a simple answer, unfortunately. Let me, let me explain why. There's constantly churn in the program, and that is attributable primarily to people moving out of communities and moving into communities. That tends to dwarf the number of people who are sort of intentionally opting out. And so the number of enrollments kind of zigzag like this, and extracting the subset that is based on an intentional opt-out is actually difficult to do.
Other than names.
Yeah, yeah. So we have not seen, though, a significant uptick in in opt-out, in the patterns of intentional opt-outs in this current contract. Every now and then, when there's like extra attention through a media account or something like that, we might see a spike in it, but it hasn't been an order of magnitude increase. But again, look, our view is, everyone should be empowered to make the energy choices they want to. And if someone doesn't want to be a part of this program, we don't want to keep them in the program. We want to let them know what their choices are. If we can do that more effectively, again, in partnership with municipal leaders who know their communities best, that's the that's the path we want to take.
Any other questions from the board?
I have a question. Hi. So since you started going out and trying to get municipalities to sign up again, has have you received feedback that people are not interested?
No. We have, I'd say, the 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 center of gravity has been support for the program, inclination to join again, questions about some specific issues, including the pricing in the current contract, you know, natural questions that we are eager to address. But the indication we have so far is that the communities that we're in are likely to re-up. I don't know if we'll get to 100%. We haven't made all our presentations yet. We're kind of midway through it. But but we've gotten a generally favorable reaction. In fact, our largest community, Yonkers, is likely to renew tomorrow. And a couple of communities have already adopted their MOUs. I know at least one that's likely to do it tonight, another likely to do it tomorrow. So we're beginning to kind of get rolling.
Yeah, that was going to be my next question, because, you know, as a community of 10,000 residents, obviously, we're not going to sway the needle when you're going out for contract negotiations. But having communities like White Plains, Yonkers, and some Mount Vernon, New Rochelle, as part of the, as part of this program, does really benefit our residents because it it increases the purchasing power of of the program itself. And so I guess, knowing that Yonkers is most likely going to be part of the program, do you have any inclination from some of the other large communities?
Not yet. We just had a presentation to New Rochelle this afternoon. I was not there, which was. You know, I figured, let's not mix, mix roles.
Probably for the best, yeah.
Probably for the best. We have a presentation scheduled for White Plains in another week or so. So I don't, and those are the largest within the aggregation. So I don't, and those are the largest within the aggregation. Yonkers, I should be clear, just in the interest of transparency, it's part of the program, but it constitutes its own aggregation because it's large enough to do that. So it's, it's a distinct contract, but obviously similar circumstances.
Oh, it's not the same rate?
It's, it's, it's a slightly different rate, but it's helpful to us because by confirming the Yonkers rate now, we're actually also confirming the indicatives that are likely to apply to the, the other aggregation. So what we've seen through the bidding process today is reassuring to us that the projections we, we've made are consistent.
And to the mayor's comment, what about like the White Plains and Mount Vernon, New Rochelle, are they part of the rate that we'd be in?
Yes. Well, White Plains and New Rochelle would be, Mount Vernon would not be. In total, there are, let me just break it down for you. There are, there are 29 of the 45 municipalities in Westchester are part of Westchester Power. In the aggregate, they represent about two-thirds of the county's population. But they're split into three different aggregations. There's Yonkers, which is its own world. There are five communities in the northeastern portion of Westchester that are part of the NISEG utility. And then the remaining 24 are within the, the other Con Ed aggregation. And as you said, New Rochelle and White Plains are the biggest of those. Actually, Greenberg, now that I think about it, although it's split up because the villages all go in independently, but if you put Greenberg together, it's, it's actually bigger than New Rochelle and, and White Plains. So I mean, I can, if you, if it's of interest, I could of course give you a complete list of all the communities, but, but you're, you're in good company. Small but mighty.
Chris's line.
Do you have a rate yet for Yonkers or?
It's going to be confirmed tomorrow morning. It is right in line with what I showed for the indicatives. I mean, maybe up, up or down, you know, a tenth of a point here.
So around that 12 or?
Yeah, it's, it's, so again, helpful to see the indicators confirmed through an actual bid.
Right. And what was the last, remind me, the last contract was around 14?
15 and a half.
15 and a half, right. So 12 would represent a savings even from where we're, where we currently are. Okay.
Well, again, thank you so much for this opportunity. And just to be clear, we will be available to you individually, you in small groups, to the professional staff. If there are any questions or issues that arise and we can be helpful in, in working with you, that's our job. So please don't hesitate to reach out.
Thank you.
Thank you. And as Chris mentioned, I mean, we don't have a resolution prepared tonight, so we're not acting on this tonight. But we will certainly act in haste to make sure that Rybrook gives an answer to Westchester Power and Sustainable Westchester so that you can confirm or, you know, which way we're going.
Thank you. I'm grateful for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving along, resolution number one. Now it's got to load. Considering the use of Village Streets on Carlton Lane and Bonwood Road for a block party on July 20th, 2024.
Whereas the village has received a letter dated May 30th from Christine Boduch of 17 Carlton Lane, request the use of Village Streets for a block party to be held on July 20th with a rain date of August 3rd from 5:00 PM to 11:00 PM. And whereas the board is supportive of this block party, now therefore be resolved that the use of Carlton Lane and Bonwood Road on Saturday, July 20th, with the rain date of August 3rd from 5:00 PM to 11:00 PM on the proposed block party on Carlton Lane and Bonwood Road event is hereby approved with the terms to be established by the police department.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion second, please? And I believe we have a representative, if you want to come up, say a few words.
But thank you. Good evening. Thank you for fitting us into the agenda. I sincerely appreciate it. And let me know if you have any questions, but we're really excited about the possibility of hosting a block party in Carlton Lane. Oh, I'm so sorry. As you can see, we've got like 13 families that, you know, are all on board and you know, a lot of them are actually members of like the Cub Scouts, so I'll make sure that we keep the community clean after the event. I'm sure, you know, I'm sensitive to making sure that the street is, is accessible in case of an emergency. You know, I, I think we're going to hopefully hire like a DJ and maybe like some services like cotton candy and snow cones and you know, a balloon artist or things like that for the children, but we just want it to be a fun festive event.
Any questions coming from the board? I mean, is?
I have a, I just have a quick question. I'm sorry. So it says you want to go till 11. If you've got a DJ, would you have the DJ be going till 11?
My thought is probably until 10:45. Obviously, if there's.
What's our noise ordinance, Chris?
Yeah.
Greg, do you know the, when the noise ordinance, how late they can have go till?
I mean, I don't, I don't participate if you.
Who's going to complain?
That sounds as travel.
You're invited. You're all invited. But really, if you, if you need for that to kind of like go off sooner, then totally happy to do that.
I guess only if someone complains and if they're all there, no one's complaining.
Yeah.
There you go. Chapter 158, noise.
One second, he's going to look it up for you.
I have E-code on rapid fire on my computer. Surprise, surprise.
Good for you. I'm going to call you.
Yeah, and I don't, if I, what I remember is there really isn't much time because it's more about, it's, it's more about what people, what, what people deem. It's more about, you know, because it's more about equipment, yeah, so. All right. Well, I mean, certainly as someone who myself has been known to throw a block party most years, I, I understand the reasoning for this and how it brings the community together, so. Please, if you want to come up.
Greg.
It said details to be worked out with the police. How is that, how is that done?
You can communicate directly with, or probably best through Chris.
Fine. We'll get you over to the police department and they'll talk to you about anything, just in terms of if we put barricades out or, you know, any kind of control. We can need to make sure there's access on the roadways for emergency services.
Right. Yeah, and a lot of times, you know, I know with a certain, a certain other block party, we like to close down the street in the area in which we're conducting everything. And so we have barricades that we'll put up. But people, it's not, you know, nothing, nothing that can't be moved very quickly and easily should an ambulance, should a fire truck, should anything else, a police vehicle need to get through.
Make sure they're not setting up in the street or anything like that.
Yeah, that it needs to be things that can be moved quickly so that there's access through. So you're not having a big bouncy castle in the middle of the street that completely blocks it.
I'll put it on my lawn.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Greg?
Thank you for your time. I really appreciate it.
Trustee Epstein?
Enjoy, yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Moreno?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you. Good luck. All right, resolution number two. Considering accepting a grant donation from the Ry Women's Club for AJP Center.
Whereas the Women's Club of Ry wants to provide a grant donation, the amount of, it's actually $1,200 to the Village of Rybrook Anthony J. Pacilpa Center to provide financial assistance to seniors to participate in AJP's hot meal and fitness programs. And whereas the Village of Rybrook is interested in accepting this grant donation, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees, acting as the Board of Directors of the Friends of Rybrook, hereby accepts the grant donation in the amount of $1,200 to the AJP Pacilpa Center to provide financial assistance to seniors to participate in the hot meal and fitness programs. And be further resolved that the mayor and administrator are authorized to sign any documents necessary to accomplish the purposes of this resolution.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion second, please?
Second.
Certainly, we are very thankful to the Ry Women's Club for this donation, allowing us to further the programming at AJP. Do we know what precipitated this donation?
I do not.
Okay.
I think that they, the, one of the members attends and absolutely loves what Liz does. So she wanted to make sure she got this money.
And I know there was a grand applicant, an application that was submitted by the senior center as well.
Okay.
Chris, the donation says 1,200.
1,200.
1,200.
And the resolution says 15?
Yeah, I read it. We corrected, I corrected it when I read it.
Okay, sorry.
Any other questions or comments?
Nope.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Moreno?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you. And again, we thank the Ry Women's Club. Resolution number three. Considering accepted, accepting a donation for the AJP Center.
Whereas Richard LaRusso of 15 Cobbler's Lane, Norwalk, Connecticut wishes to make a donation of $25 to the AJP Senior Center in memory of Julia Urban. And whereas Rybrook is interested in accepting the donation, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees, acting as the Board of Directors of the Friends of Rybrook, accepts the donation of $25 in memory of Julia Urban, Julia Urban for the AJP Senior Center. And be further resolved that the mayor and administrator are authorized to sign any documents necessary to accomplish the purposes of this resolution.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion second, please? Do we have a way of acknowledging these? I know sometimes when it's made in honor of someone, there's something.
We do sometimes if there's a plaque involved or anything like that. Sometimes people donate the plaques and they get a copy of the resolution too, in some cases where there's, not in this case, I'm suggesting, but tax, tax benefits and things. People get a copy of it for their records.
Yeah, no, I just, I mean, I have a feeling in this. I mean, just sometimes it's notifications sent to the family that this has been made in their honor, but
Casino, eh?
I don't even know if we'd have that information, so. All right. Any other questions or comments?
No.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Moreno?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you. And a complete shift of topics. Resolution number four. Considering, considering a modification on license and fee schedule for an adult casino night event.
Whereas the superintendent of Parks and Recreation has proposed an adult casino night themed event. And whereas proposed adult casino night themed event would take place on July 27th from 7:00 to 10:00 PM at the King Street Turf Field. Now therefore be it resolved that the, whereas the proposed fee for the casino themed night is $100 per person for tokens for the event with an extra $50 to be replenished if needed, now therefore be it resolved that if the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees hereby approves modifying the license and fee schedule by adding the following program. It's an adult casino night. It's $100 per person and $50 for additional tokens or fake cash, whatever they end up using.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion second, please? All right, we need some explanation here.
Sure. This was, I don't know if you recall, but we talked about this in the budget, that this was one of the programs. You know, we're trying to come up with some more adult themed programs. So this is something that we, we came, the committee that we have, the Community Support Committee came up with and this was something that said, oh, this might be of interest to people, where there won't be any cash going on here except for where, except for the entrance fee. But the, basically it's all fake tokens and they'd have a casino group come out and it would be a fun night of playing games. The, the fee would also include passing around like hors d'oeuvres, which, you know, staff would be doing and, you know, dressed up a little bit and, and doing things like that. And it's meant to be, but the dealers and the tables are all provided by professional groups that do these things.
Can I be a pit boss?
Sure, why not? But there's no money won or lost. It's just an entrance fee.
Right. My, I guess my question is if there's, if it's not real money, why is there a $50 fee to re-up?
If people want to continue, well, if you're out and you need to, it's up to you. They lose it all. They want to do some more.
And they want to keep going.
They want to keep losing. You could do the same. They need to do it at a flat rate if you wanted to.
Do we, do we have a, do we have vendors lined up for this?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're, we're fully aware of the costs to the village on this.
Yep, it's in the backup. The.
A break even if we don't have.
The break even would be with, including, it's about 35 people with, without the personnel costs, but with all the other expenses, you add food and everything else, you probably need 80 to be a break even.
Right. So if you add a certain point.
If you register and if you don't get it, I don't know.
And we can cancel.
Yeah, I would think so. Just have to check the agreement with the vendor.
Right. I, I'm just asking.
Do it early enough in advance before
Right.
that you beat the cancellation for the vendor.
Exactly, because that's, that's soon. That's six weeks away.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It is in our, it's in the rec book. And again, we're just trying things differently to see if it works and we thought it'd be kind of an adult themed event, you know, you couldn't have kids. You'd have to either cancel. I don't know if there's a rain date. I'd have to ask if there's a rain date.
Yeah, I was just curious about, I was also curious, and I, why the field?
We thought it'd be easier, less, more controlled, you know, who goes in, we put tents down there, put lights under the tents. It's a little, you know, you don't have to worry about, you don't have to worry about mud. You don't have to worry about any of that.
Right.
Like a mansion at Crawford Park.
We thought we could put some lights down there easier. We have lights down. We have electric there. So that was some of the thought.
Indoor venue?
Yeah. We just thought it'd be interesting. That's all.
Okay.
But again, this is the first time trying it. This is us trying something. If, if you want to do something different, tell me. But if not, you know, if you wanted to move it, but I think we get more people. I think people would find it more interesting, like in AJP.
I think we're fine with this, but, but to Susan's point, I think we need to know.
Be able to cancel.
Yeah, yeah. When the, when the point of no return is.
Yep.
So that we're able to know that it's not going to.
Because it may be in the brochure, but quite frankly, I don't think the residents are aware of it. They make their dates.
We didn't, and we didn't, we couldn't advertise it until we got the fees set. So now we can push out and see how many register and give a deadline.
To know the date, and I do think there needs to be a rain date and a second thought as to what you're going to do.
Yeah. I'll check about the rain day. I just don't know the availability of the vendors. That's where we have to check because I think we got priced, multiple prices.
Did you guys think about Crawford Park mansion?
We don't own it, so we tend not to. And the fields issues and everything else going on there, we kind of stick around.
Underneath the thing where the, I, I just think that.
Here? We could. We could. I just thought people would like to go somewhere that's outside in the summer, in a warmer weather, but it's up to you guys.
Probably.
I think people would like to go somewhere that's interesting.
Sounds like a lot more work.
Yeah.
It is, but.
I don't know. I think, I think this is an idea coming out of the rec department and.
We could do it at AJP. We just thought people would be more likely to come here. When we hold them there, we don't always get the kind of turnout.
And I mean, this is, this is an idea, to me, this is an idea coming out of rec. You know, I think we want to encourage these types of, let's give it a try. Let's see what happens.
Try to try something. If it doesn't work, you don't do it again.
Exactly. Or it doesn't run because no one's signing up for it, so.
But the cost, I'm just, I'm just asking.
The cost?
Yes.
The cost was because we need to do that. We thought the 80, if $80 for a break even, that includes food, that includes tables, that includes the rental of the company. That's a pretty good deal for, for a night out, I would think.
So I'm just, want to make sure that there is a, an X date.
If you cut it in half, you'd have to double the, the attendees to break even. So I think that would be tough. We'll find out.
We'll find out.
That's why, listen, I think it's good that we tried different things and you see what sticks. You never know.
Yeah.
Trying to come up with, you know, one of the things we tried to do is come up with some more adult themed things to try. There's certainly other ones we're trying too, but this is just another thought to say, hey, let's have a night out and go on the turf and there's bathrooms there. There's, you know, facilities.
All right.
Well, if he had the birthday party worked out, we'll know.
Yeah, that's right. That's right. That's right around the corner. Literally.
I'm assuming that's going to be in the administrators report.
It will be.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
No.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Moreno?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you. And we wish everyone good luck on this one. All right, resolution number five. Considering a request for a temporary license agreement for sanitary sewer repairs at 16 Eagles Bluff.
Okay, and the next two are both, the next two items are both license agreements for access, so we can make those, those repairs. Do you want me to move to the resolve clause or do you want me to summarize it?
I think if you summarize it, it's fine. And then on the second one, we'll move right to the resolve clause.
Okay. Good. So this is a request for a temporary license agreement for sanitary sewer repairs. This one is on 16 Eagles Bluff. And this is David Simon and Marissa Simon, who are the owners. It's an agreement with them. And whereas there's already a 15-foot wide drainagement on the property. And where we seek to excavate and repair a sanitary sewer pipe located within the drainagement, which require access. And whereas an agreement has been prepared by council. And whereas under SIKR, this is a type two action, so no further environmental review is required. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees, upon consideration of the aforementioned circumstances, authorizes Rybrook to enter into a temporary license agreement with David Simon and Marissa Simon to allow the village to excavate and repair a necessary sewer pipe located within the drainagement located on the property of 16 Eagles Bluff. And be further resolved that the mayor and administrator are authorized to execute the license agreement and deliver all not necess- all necessary documents to accomplish its purpose.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion second, please?
Second.
Michael?
250.
You want to tell us a little something about it?
Got a broken sewer pipe, needs to get fixed.
It's a sewer pipe.
You're there, I mean, I mean, it is.
We have a little unique situation here where we have a sewer line that was installed years ago within a drainage easement, and as a result, the drainage easement does not codify a sewer within easement, so we need access agreements with the two property owners to repair this line. So hence why we're here.
We need access, and then we got to restore it.
Restoration is part of the project. Now, we had a pre-construction meeting this afternoon with the homeowners on site, and we're ready to roll, looking, we start date of Monday for Eagles Bluff with a couple of days to work, so hopefully done by Wednesday, Thursday, weather pending.
Okay.
So it's mostly in landscaped areas?
Mostly in the landscaped area within the easement area, yes. We have to remove a number of bushes and shrubs.
And this is served, this sewer pipe is serving the home at 259 North Ridge?
Correct.
Okay.
Or formerly 259.
And then running down?
It's actually the, it's actually the horizontal section of pipe that goes from the sewer main to a manhole structure behind the house on Eagles Bluff, and then the house on North Ridge Street actually ties into that structure. So we're only replacing the, well, we're only working on the portion between the houses on Eagles Bluff, because everything past that is a house lateral.
Gotcha. Alright, and that's his, 20 is the, is the former walk.
And that serves just one home?
Yes.
Wow.
Yes, it looks like that was installed in 1957, if I recall. Looks like it was done predominantly for future expansion or future work in that area for multiple houses potentially.
Got it.
You're not installing the eight-inch main for one house.
No, you're not.
And not reconfiguring the, in a different look, you can't reconfigure that drain line. It's got to go where it's got to go, can't go to another.
It is where it is, can't move it.
Can't move it.
And they know this when they were developing 259 North Ridge?
Uh, that house was hooked up to the sewer line, had nothing to do with the construction of the house. This had to do with our inspection of the sewer lines as part of our Save the Sound investigations that we're doing. That's how this came about.
Alright.
That's it.
Any other questions?
Nope.
No, hope to get good weather.
We'll make it work either way.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Alright.
Trusty Epstein?
Yes.
Trusty Fisher?
Yes.
Trusty Moreno?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resol, I forgot numbers. Resolution number six. Consider a request for a temporary license agreement for sanitary sewer repairs at 20 Eagles Bluff.
Okay, and this is Jared Cutler, Carly Cutler, Casey Cutler, who are the owners of 20 Eagles Bluff. Same situation, there's a 15-foot wide drainage easement, the need, we need to get access to do sanitary sewerage repairs of the pipes in the easement, and there's a, under SIKR, this is a type 2 action, so no further environmental review is required. And therefore, the Board of Trustees, in consideration of the circumstances, authorizes Rybrook to enter into a temporary license agreement with the Cutlers to allow the village to excavate and repair the sanitary sewer pipe located within the drainage easement located on the property of 20 Eagles Bluff, and be it further resolved that Mayor and Administrator are authorized to execute the agreement and deliver all necessary documents to accomplish its purposes.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion second, please?
Second.
Alright, Greg?
Trusty Epstein?
Yes.
Trusty Fisher?
Yes.
Trusty Moreno?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, resolution number seven. Considering modifying capital budget project and establishing new capital project as of year-end, May 31st, 2024.
Okay, now therefore reserve that the NRCS Recovery Bio Capital Fund project be modified to reflect the full amount of the award obligated by the Department of Agriculture as of the year-end. So this is a federal aid NRCS by recovery, increasing the revenues by $28,535.196 and increasing appropriations in the same amount. And be it further resolved, the capital budget is restated as follows, and basically, there's just a reflection of that, they're showing the change in the approved budget and the modified budget. And be it further resolved that the Village Hall Building Repairs Capital Project be established and funded by insurance recovery monies received as a result of stormwater damages to Village Hall as of the year-end fiscal year, May 31st, 2024. And that's the amount of $12,000 on both the revenues and the appropriation side of it, and that's all.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion second, please?
Motion.
Second, second.
So this is really cleanup for budgeting purposes. If you're going to have, in order to spend the, reserve the insurance monies and get reimbursement, you know, we have some costs and we have to lay the money out and we get it back in at the end of the fiscal year, so it needs to be reflected.
Alright, seems pretty straightforward. It's nothing unexpected, because we know we're in this program and this is just making sure that everything's accounted for properly in the budget.
On the, exactly. From an auditing standpoint, and also on the other side, it's just holding the money from insurance recoveries for the repair work from, in the rec department. That was damage, had damage and storms.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
No.
Trusty Epstein?
Yes.
Trusty Fisher?
Yes.
Trusty Moreno?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you, and we always thank Trish for keeping us nice and clean on those auditing reports.
I don't know, she does that.
And she does monitoring, because these are very important. Resolution number eight, considering a budget modification for an electric vehicle.
Now therefore be resolved that the following fiscal year of 2024-25 budget modification to fund the staff vehicle electric capital project be approved, and this is a decrease in appropriations of $75,15, increase in revenues in the like amount, and increase in appropriations of also the same amount of the $7,515. And be it further resolved that the following fiscal year, 24-25 capital project is restated as follows, and this is from general obligation, it's basically in 2025, you're creating a capital project for the staff vehicle electric in the amount of $25,000 was the approved budget. That modified budget reflects that $75,15, and that shows the modified budget for 2024.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion second, please?
So moved.
And, and again, this is, this has to do, we expect that money to come back in rebate form.
Correct. Exactly. So we had $25,000 approved in the budget. We had to, we purchased the electric vehicle, we're getting $7,000 back in a rebate, which basically will, that's the fund of the additional money that we needed. That vehicle happens to be here now, and it's plugged into the EV charging station in the rear parking lot.
Wow. Yes, and as much as Mr. Bramson would like to tell us that it doesn't make as big of a difference as other things that we could be doing, I like to think that it actually does make a difference, and starting to move the needle a little bit on what we do within Rybrook.
Each step counts.
And starting to get a little bit of an electrification of our fleet, moving in the right direction, which I am personally very happy about.
Surprising amount of room in that vehicle, by the way.
There is.
For, for a small EV, we were all shocked to see the room that was inside that when you sit in it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, they are.
Yeah.
They are, so. And I've, yeah. Having been in one and driven them, yes. Any questions or comments from the board?
Nope.
No.
Trusty Epstein?
Yes.
Trusty Fisher?
Yes.
Trusty Moreno?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number nine. Considering a village contribution to the Columbus Day Celebration Committee for the annual parade and approving use of village streets.
Whereas the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees supports the annual Columbus Day Parade, sponsored by the Columbus Day Celebration Committee, and whereas the Columbus Day Celebration Committee is requesting the use of village streets for its annual Columbus Day Parade, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves that $800 be provided to the Columbus Day Celebration Committee for the parade on Sunday, October 13th, with a rain date of October 20th, and be it further resolved that the committee is authorized to use the streets in the village for the Columbus Day Parade on October 13th or October 20th, if it was a rain date, and where be it further resolved that the final village route in any conditions be approved by the Police Chief of the Village of Rybrook Police Department.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion second, please?
Second.
Since the, there, in the letter requesting this, there was no actual amount listed, I'm assuming this is what we've given in the past?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, that's what I figured. I, for one, am hoping that it is on the originally scheduled date, because if it's on the rain date, I may not make it, because that's my wife's birthday.
Okay.
So that, that'll be up in the air.
Okay.
If it rains on the 13th.
That'll be a beautiful day.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Trusty Epstein?
Yes.
Trusty Fisher?
Yes.
Trusty Moreno?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number 10. Considering approval of the minutes for the meeting held on January 9th, 2024.
Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees approves the minutes for the meeting held on January 9th, 2024.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion second, please?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, thank you. Administrator's report.
Okay, a couple of quick items. First is that, though, we talked about it before, but the Rybrook birthday is scheduled for this Saturday, June 15th, from 12:00 to 4:00 PM. New location, the King Street Athletic Field. So it'll be a new venue, because the town is doing work over at Crawford Park. We still have an excellent, excellent relationship with the town. They'll be at the birthday ceremony as well. But, yeah, they have a temporary issue with the fields where they're redoing those, so we have agreed to move it over to the King Street Fields. The weather looks beautiful, going to have parking with the school, at the, up at the school upper lot. We're going to have food, and the tents are already set up at the top, at the top of the hill, so the food will be there. We're going to have, you know, assistance if people need assistance getting down the hill and all. And it's going to be a nice fun event. We have a lot of water events as well, so that'll be good too, if the day is particularly hot, but it looks like a beautiful day, so we're really excited about that. Village offices will be closed next Wednesday, June 19th, for Juneteenth. The EMS bill, unfortunately, that we've talked about in the past, did not pass this year. It did get approved by the Senate, but did not move out of committee in the Assembly. So everyone's extremely disappointed. I was talking to some county officials today about it, but we're told that there was a lot of progress made, and next year they think it's definitely going to go, but, you know, it was disappointing because we thought everything was lined up for this year, so that was very disappointing. Early voting starts this weekend, so anybody that wants to vote early, early voting for the primary. The primary is on June 25th, but the early voting starts this Saturday, June 15th, and goes until June 23rd. And we do have an early voting location in Rybrook at the Rybrook Firehouse. That's all for tonight.
Okay, Chris, thank you. Moving on to old business, and I apologize that, you know, it's, it's old business. We tried to get through that meeting as quickly as we could to get, to get to this. So regarding a traffic engineering report on adding a crosswalk on North Ridge Street at the Crawford Park entrance.
Okay, so one of the things that we've been looking to do here is, you know, we, we've gone out and watched, we see people crossing Ridge Street, and we looked at, we were trying to say, is there a safer way for people to cross from the sidewalks on the east side of Ridge Street over to the, into Crawford Park, because people are, it's not a controlled intersection in that there's no stop signs or lights or anything like that. And we tried to say, is there, is the sight distances, which can get a little tricky there because of the rising of the road, is there enough sight distance? Is this a way to do it? What kind of signage can we put in advance so that we, that would be sufficient to warn people? So this is something, so we had Brian Dempsey of DTS Providence look at this issue, and the, and his conclusion was that it does meet all the criteria. There's two locations that the sidewalks could be, either basically just north or just immediately south of, because you can't go into the driveway, you know, you've got to have a landing area for ADA accessibility, and across the street is a side, is an open driveway. You can't do it there either, into crosswalk into a driveway. So just immediately north of the Crawford Park entrance, a little bit north, a couple, a little bit further up, and/or directly south of the driveway are both options that would work. We'd have to have some advanced signage and, and some that would be, probably be lit up, I would have to say, when it, or active, when it's activated. But they did show drawings. The next step is, if the board wants to put a crosswalk here, then we, we've already given copies of this to the town of Ry, because if you see in the pictures and you see in the, on the plans, there is a wall there, we need to have an appropriate space that meets for ADA, to have a landing area for people as they cross from the crosswalk, they can't hit into a wall. They need to have enough space there and to be able to connect into the driveway. So, you know, this, it, the good news is it can be done. We just have to work with the town about which location it should be placed in. Other things we asked them to look at, and other things we looked at too, we looked at things like road narrowing, we looked at different types of surfaces, we've looked at, we looked at other things, like is there a way that the state would approve lower speed limits around a park, but none of those were, were recommended. In fact, you can't lower the speed limit near the park there. We tried to see if there was a park safety zone. The worst, the lowest you could go is if you did a traffic study, which would be required, you could go down to 25, which is a 5 mile an hour difference. I'm not sure that's really moving the dial, but that's the only thing you can do under the new law, that it's not because it's a park, it's just you're allowed to go to 25 following a traffic study. So that's the other option that could be pursued if the board wanted to. But a traffic study would have to show that, and most streets have a natural flow to it.
Right.
So you have to show that the natural flow is in a certain percentile to show that the traffic could be lowered to 25 if the board wanted to look at that.
Right, right. I, I should say that I did hear from one town of Ry official.
Mm-hmm.
Who expressed concerns about this.
Mm-hmm.
You know, that, you know, you could potentially have something where there's a flashing light and a crosswalk, and someone start, goes to cross thinking that they're safe, and someone's coming flying down Ridge Street unaware of what's going on there, and texting on their phone or something.
It's a possible, that's why we want to make sure, from a, an engineering perspective, is there the sightlines that are necessary?
Right.
That's why, that's what the, that's the biggest concern I had too, but, you know, that's why you do these, that's why you have the engineers look at it, and it was sufficient to meet that, given the, with advanced signage.
Right. As a quick question, Chris, and obviously there are going to be a lot of questions from the board.
Mm-hmm.
But just as a procedural question, I mean, is this something that we would, you know, kind of voice our opinions on a little bit, kick to traffic commission?
You could.
For a report recommendation?
You could. I would, I would recommend maybe one to do is have a dialogue with the town, have a real meeting with the town to see if they're open to, because they may have to modify some of their space.
Right, they would have to modify.
So if they have to modify their space there, and they've done some improvements there, they do have plantings, they do have the walls there.
Right.
So there'd be some modifications. So if they're open to it, then, then I think, you know, the board can either act on it or refer to traffic, it's your choice as well.
Alright, but the next step would be conversation with the town.
Yeah, I would think so. And we have given them a copy of everything as well.
Oh, I know, yes. I know that I saw the email where we.
I have one other question because I took a drive in this area. Not that I don't go on Ridge Street every day countless times. But I was trying to think of, uh, a place where the sightline was where you wouldn't be going fast, going up or going down. And I know that there is, we know where we had the Arbor Day, where they have the entrance to the park. Not the entrance, but like where they have that whole section where there's new trees that were planted, which is really kind of across from Ridge Boulevard. Was that a consideration?
Well.
Having a crosswalk.
The one thing is, this, some of the considerations. Uh, uh, we did look up and down there. One of the thoughts was if people are walking north, they might use that, that type of, or think of it from the opposite direction as well.
Right.
The problem is, most people are gonna go to the, where the entrance is, is Crawford and cross there anyhow. So you want to make that as safe as possible, right? So I, I think if, because they're not gonna walk past the entrance, go down south, go across and come back up. They're just gonna cross. So that, that's the thought. A pedestrian, and that's what this is for, is pedestrians.
Exactly.
So, but the other, you know, there's, there's pluses, there's good and bad in this. There's other, when you go stand out there, you'll see how many people are crossing. There's a lot of people crossing there. So, you know, that's why we're looking at it, because we want it to be done as safely as possible. The other, and, and the other side of that is, um, you know, you want, I was hoping if there was room for road diets, you know, squeezing, but there's not so much of that. So you're probably gonna have something where you're activating the, the flashing lights. That's a consideration too, because now you're gonna have flashing lights. Whether you want that or not is a consideration to think of from a policy perspective. But of course, you want to give the advance warnings if people are crossing there because you don't want that person who's on their phone or getting distracted. They want to make sure that it's visible. So it's possible, it's different, but I think it's, it's definitely possible.
All right, I have a question. Why wouldn't we, who, why wouldn't we want blinking lights? What's the opposition?
You would, but sometimes, you know, you're gonna see, the neighbors might see them at night if they get activated, things like that. If it's certain times of the year when it's dark or getting dark, you know, the lights will shine as much as you try to directionalize them.
And, and this isn't a public hearing or anything, but Mr. LaRunga, I know this is very near and dear to your heart if you want to say anything.
I had a quick question.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
Quick thing. The, Chris, that is a very, very dangerous area. Cars come up that Ridge Street, I mean, I did as a kid, not anymore. And you go up real fast. And the visibility is, is a kid on.
How long is that? Is that okay, Greg? Is he safe now?
Ray, does it have to be limited?
My feeling is, I, I, I can only say that definitely not the number two scenario. The number one scenario, if anything, and it's gonna be the number one, I think we should really talk to the town of Ry and pushing that further north. The further north you are, the safer it is. It's a flatter, it's a, it's more visible on both directions because you come up the hill. You've got an area.
The flatter area.
Flatter area, and maybe the town of Ry could make a break in that wall with a path or something. It's kind of, I feel bad for the people at this end who have to walk up that road.
Yeah, who would have to walk cross paths to go up and go across.
And it's beautiful. I have the looks, you're walking down Bondland and go right over. It's great, there's no, you know, I don't have to worry about traffic. And I can see, the more I think about it, the more it'd be better, nicer if the town of Ry, you know, they seem to be spending a lot of money up there. Maybe they can put a path to bring you up, but no, starting north and breaking through that stone wall.
And I would, and I would also say, and I would also say, as someone who lives right there
Yeah.
that has often crossed Ridge Street with my children.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a, it's a juggle.
It's, you know, you know, we've, we've always done it without incident.
No, but it's a, it's a, it's nerve, nerve wracking, to say the least.
We sat there for a meeting, uh, about a year ago. We sat there and we were watching, having a meeting on a different topic at the entrance there. And there was so many people that crossed the street at that location in that forty five minutes, couldn't believe how many people were crossing.
A lot of people.
So if people are crossing it, the thought was, let's see if we can make it safer.
Right, no, and, and absolutely, and, and, um, yeah, sorry.
Hi, uh, is this on?
Yes.
Joe LaRunga, I live at one twenty six, so I see this every day. And, you know, I brought this to your attention. I'm really happy that you're doing something about it and what the right answer is. I don't know. Something needs to be done. I can tell you that the other day I was leaving my driveway and somebody bulleted down at sixty miles an hour and honked at me. I'm like, I'm leaving my driveway and you're, you know. And then the other day, I was on my bike, going on Ridge, going north, because I'm a cyclist, right along the curb, and this guy came so close to me that my bike shook. So, yes, the problem is people need safety crossing, but it's also the speed issue. Like, that's number one. And, you know, um, putting it more close, putting that, um, crosswalk closer to the north side. Yeah, like with my daughter, we come out of my driveway, go down the grass and kind of ju, jump the wall. And that wall, right past my home, is broken into pieces. Like, it needs construction anyway. So if you're gonna put a crosswalk somewhere and they're gonna break wall, you might as well have them break wall where it's already broken because half the work's already done for them.
If I could ask you a question?
Yeah.
I mean, just as, out of curiosity, because it was brought up during this discussion, as one of the neighbors who could potentially be impacted by the flashing lights, how do you feel about that?
I'll close my blind. Like, that's all, like, big deal. It's a flashing red light for all of twenty seconds, thirty seconds. It doesn't stay on long. I'm, I drive my daughter to Resurrection for pre-K every day, and on Milton Road, those lights, they have the, the, the exact thing we were talking about, the crosswalk. It's at an apartment building, actually, and goes to their, um, to their parking lot. And people press the button, it flashes. Most people stop, some people just go through it. And, you know, you shouldn't be crossing the street looking at your cell phone, so, you know, if,
True.
You know, like you said, if you're, that could be dangerous, but if you're, you know, D U M, to do that, then, you know, that shouldn't be our issue. It should be like, let's make it safer.
Just change for people, for sure.
Yeah, let's make it safer for everybody, and, you know, the speed is still the number one problem there. And, you know, I've told my friends, like, hey, the cops sit in my driveway now and stuff like that. And my friend Ben's like, I guess I should need to go lower than fifty. I'm like, dude, you do fifty, I'm gonna throw a brick at you. Like, it's just crazy.
We would not advocate for anything like that.
But it's just crazy how fit, like, people just go so quick there. And I think the crosswalk with the signage and the flashing lights, as soon as I told my wife about this tonight, she's like, that's gonna make people slow down because they're gonna start learning it's there, and they're gonna start reacting sooner and just be like, ah, there's probably gonna be somebody crossing, let me start slowing down.
I absolutely agree that I think it would have a calming effect on the road.
I would think so.
No, the, the sign does, just even that, we're not even flashing.
Yeah, even just that sign yield to pedestrians that you see in the middle.
And it's, like, I don't know if you've seen the sign, like, it's pretty monstrous and it's got the flashing lights on all sides, and when it does flash, it's kind of like, oh.
You'll notice it. You'll notice it.
Yeah.
So, but, yeah, thank you for doing this, and hopefully we can come to a resolution and it works with the town, with the town of Ry and, you know, do something.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I think we should have a powwow with our, our traffic commission, right? It's a good idea.
Well, I think we start with the, I think.
Share with them and the town of Ry.
Yeah, let's start with the, let's start, we can share this with them, but we're not.
When does traffic mean, not for another month and a half, right? Oh, okay. So we can share, have a discussion with it then.
But I don't think we're formally sending it to them for reporting recommendation.
No.
But let's share it with them and let's, let's start the conversation with the town of Ry.
Yeah, that's a definite.
Sure, let's get their input. I think that's why they, we have a traffic commission.
Yep. I think they'd be receptive to something like that.
Absolutely. All right, any other questions or comments from the board about this?
No.
Um, Mike Nowak is saying something over there.
Michael, did you have?
Yeah, we may have to adjust that. Michael's saying, the further you go north, that may have to be restudied to make sure you have that sightline again.
Yeah, the sightlines.
So we'll take it one step at a time. If that happens, at least, you know, we're, we're a step ahead on that. If we have to spend a little bit more to look at that, shouldn't be, shouldn't be a big cost.
Shouldn't be a huge cost, no. No, and certainly something that we're open to doing, so.
He can come out again, right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
All right.
Good, any other questions or comments on this?
No.
No.
Okay, any other questions or comments from the public? All right, um, I do want to say, because I don't think it was mentioned, but we will mention it in future meetings, that we do also have our upcoming concert series. Uh, July, July tenth is Andrea and the Rug Riders, which we've had in the past. Uh, July twenty fourth or twenty fifth is.
Well, that's a rain date, there's always the rain date the day after.
Does that say Logical Pretzel?
It does.
Logical Pretzel, it's an interesting one. Um, and then July thirty first, Kicking Nash. And August twenty eighth, always a crowd favorite, Beely Dan.
And Rybrook Day this weekend, right?
Yep, and, well, Chris did say that.
Okay, good.
Now, Chris did mention that, and then of course, yes, Change of Location. Don't show up at Crawford Park. Um, it is at the King Street Fields, and we look forward to another great event.
Yes.
Thank you and have a good night. Oh, wait, sorry. The next meetings of the Board of Trustees will be on June twenty eighth and July.
It's actually June twenty fifth.
Oh, you're right, it's June twenty fifth.
And July ninth.
Okay. June, thank you for the correction, I didn't even look what day it was today. June twenty fifth and July ninth, twenty twenty four. Thank you and have a good night.
Good night.
Good night, and after July ninth as well.